Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, the Board of Education is recognizing an exceptional group of Parkway students who earned All-State Music Honors during the All-State Festival Concert at the Missouri Music Educators Association Conference in late January. We are also learning about the St. Louis Mosaic Project. And in addition, we will, several of us, the Board will be recognized for Board Appreciation Week. It's another made-up Hallmark holiday. But at this time, I'd like to invite Jeff Lackey, Coordinator of Fine Arts, to the podium for the recognition of our students.
Good evening, President Jeff Todd, Vice President Sam Scortino, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover, and all of your friends this evening. It's with great honor that I introduce 20 extremely talented and dedicated Parkway High School musicians who have achieved the distinction of having been selected to perform for the 2019 Missouri All-State Choir Band or Orchestra. Auditions for these performing positions were serious and competitive. These students first had to be selected as... There we go. Auditions for these performance positions were serious and competitive. These students first had to be selected by their local ensembles prior to being selected for All-State. Their auditions had to be performed perfectly with the technical skill and understanding that made them stand out from hundreds of other students competing across the state for the very same seats. Naturally, these students went on to represent Parkway well in their prospective concerts, which were performed back in January at the Missouri Music Educators Conference before an appreciative audience of music educators, administrators, and parents. These Parkway students have demonstrated the highest level of musical competency and have shown a personal commitment to artistic excellence. I would like to thank their music teachers for motivating, nurturing, and guiding these students into skilled and accomplished musicians they are today. And of course, I'd like to thank the parents for their continued support along the way. Now, without further ado, I'd like to introduce the All-State Missouri Music Students, sorry, All-State Students by school to be recognized by the Parkway Board of Education and Dr. Marty. I would like that they join their principal and music teachers that are present tonight for a photograph immediately following. As your name is called, please come up to be greeted by the Board. From Parkway Central High School, we had three All-State Choir students. Some are present tonight, some are not. But if you're here, please come on up. We have Alto Rachel Meisner, bass alternate Jayden Taylor, and I don't believe, present tonight soprano alternate Emily Johnson. We had All-State Orchestra from Central High, and they were violin I, April Moon, violin I, Mary Zoo, violin II, Leah Liu, violin II, Emily Yang, and on bass, Colby Heimberger, which I believe all had conflicts tonight. From Parkway North High School, we had All-State Choir members soprano, Mara Aurora, soprano Bryn Sentnor, bass Nick Shaughnessy, soprano alternate Sammy Atkins, and alto alternate Sarah Metolski, and tenor alternate Micah Schwartz. Also from Parkway North All-State Orchestra, we had viola Jay Lipsitz. South High School had two for one for All-State Choir was alto alternate Jenna Hamilton and All-State Orchestra Lenia John Johansson. And we had three members from Parkway West High School All-State Band, and they were oboe Gwynn Allendorf, oncello Nayun Ru, Again, we'd like to congratulate and thank all of our Missouri All-State students.
Now, I would like to introduce Greg, Dr. Greg Seacott, Principal of Shenandoah Valley Elementary School.
Thank you. Is this on? Thank you, Nick Stover, Dr. Marty, President Todd, and the rest of our Board of Education. It is a great honor that I introduce our next speaker, and that is the Executive Director of the St. Louis Mosaic Project. I'm very proud to have been a part of creating, or not creating, but being a part of this partnership with Parkway. And it basically, the Mosaic Project, I'm not going to talk about it, I'm going to let our speaker talk about it, but what it is, is it is for our foreign-born families, it's a way of saying that it's an organization that says that we are welcoming, and Parkway's going to join that journey with them. So please welcome Executive Director, St. Louis Mosaic Project, Betsy Cohen.
Thank you. I will say I am the proud aunt of a niece and nephew who are in the Parkway School District, so I am a bit biased. Imagine this, we have Monsanto Bayer that is bringing at least 70 international families to our region. They are looking with their relocation experts about where will they live, where are their children going to go to school. One of the things that they look at and we work with is the Mosaic Project has identified schools that want to be listed as welcoming, and that's what this is all about. So the St. Louis Mosaic Project was set up six years ago from the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership and the World Trade Center because we, as a region, have essentially a little under 5% foreign-born in our region, the bi-state region, when the national number is closer to 14%. And so the whole population of our region has been flat to down, and our foreign-born population in the region is small but growing. And so the St. Louis Mosaic Project was started with me as the Executive Director to attract and retain foreign-born families to add to our native-born families in the region. Foreign-born in our region are very spread out. The cluster map shows, and the darker colors and the darker orange is where we have the higher density of foreign-born families, and that includes where the Parkway School District is located, because you do have many foreign-born families in your school district. The goal for the Mosaic Project and why schools are being enlisted as part of the welcoming along with companies and individuals is that we want to make everyone feel welcome with the goals that we've set as a region. We have set a goal to grow by 25,000 foreign-born people in the region from 2016 to 2025, and that means we have to be welcoming to international families, international students, corporate transfers, other foreign-born people that move here. Everyone is going to count so that we can be growing. One part of that is the schools, and that adds to the other Mosaic Ambassador programs that we run. We have a program that has a foreign-born person who has a degree and can work. We introduce them to someone for their job. We help immigrant entrepreneurs get started in their businesses. We help others that are looking to network if women or men move here with a corporation and they're not working. We connect them to each other, all the ways to make them feel welcoming. We have mentors for them. And at the bottom, we have Mosaic Ambassador individuals, companies, and schools. Ameren is going to be our next Mosaic Ambassador Company that we're announcing this week. My goal is to have one per month that we announce, and Parkway will be our next Mosaic Ambassador District. The Mosaic Ambassador Schools, and there's a list of them that Greg can share with you. We have 35 different schools already that have signed on in districts. We help them with relocation, we help the families, we, the schools call us about their PTO organizations, or if there's issues about how foreign families or foreign staff have questions or any concerns or problems, and then we become a resource to you for best practices to be welcoming. We also use this as an opportunity to put publicity out about why Parkway is doing such a great job. And I will say, we've already had the forms submitted at no cost from you, and reading through all the forms from all your schools, you excel really compared to all the other schools. No surprise to you, I'm sure. The English language programs you have for adults are well-known in the region, early childhood through high school, very diverse in your populations of your schools. Programming is extensive, but certainly, when I looked at all the different schools, some of them are doing more than others, and there could be some best practice sharing and opportunities, as well as looking at areas such as staff hiring, diversity, best practices for some of the parent-teacher organizations, and family engagement. For example, sometimes we find, and Helen is one of your parents here that's worked with me, that the parent-teacher organization wants trivia nights, and foreign-born families don't know what trivia nights are all about. And so ideas that can be better. So lastly, I would say, this is very important that we, as a region, and you, as a school district, can be welcoming, listed as welcoming, and I'm very proud, working with Dr. Marty and with Greg and the other staff, that we want to welcome you, being one of our Mosaic Ambassador welcoming school districts. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
I just want to just make a few comments. First of all, Betsy mentioned Helen Humphrey, and Helen just waved. Helen has been a wonderful partner in Shenandoah, and maybe you've heard of Helen's special project, 10,000 Pencils, and she's been working with many of our schools in terms of providing for gathering up school supplies and clothes at the end of the year, and then having some partners overseas to send those to. So Helen, thank you, and Helen really brought us together with Betsy Cohen here to, on this project. And I just want to say, it's a pleasure when someone walks into your office and say, "I'm here, I want to partner with you," and it's not going to cost you anything, except just a little bit of information we need from you. So I want to just thank you for this opportunity. We are very, very proud in Parkway of the number of things that we're doing. We know we can do more, and we want to be in the work with you to gather all of those ambitious goals of getting more foreign-born residents and citizens here into the St. Louis region. But thank you so much for coming tonight, and the Board, I think, would all agree that we want to be a partner with you, and we want to encourage, as we have through some of our work with Bayer and their relocation, more welcoming families to the Parkway School District.
And I will say, Brian Lawrence is here, one of my colleagues, and when we get requests from the schools, we're available to meet with PTOs, teachers, staff, principals, any way we can be here to help, no matter how large or small that question is about how can we best serve both our native-born and our foreign-born families and our staff and our students so that we can be welcoming. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please welcome Superintendent Dr. Keith Marty to the podium.
Well, it's my pleasure. It's a week late, so this is a belated congratulations to our Board, but on behalf of our Parkway community, parents, students, employees, and educators, I want to thank our Parkway Board for their service during a school board recognition week, which was actually last week, and it was a change. It used to be in January, but now it's in February. You know, there's much written and quite a bit of research completed on what constitutes a successful Board and successful Board members. And frankly, I would say you can Google and ask the question, what makes for successful Boards, and you're going to learn quite a bit, and some of them I'm going to mention tonight. I didn't learn it on Google, but I got reinforced on Google and some of the research that has been completed. And I want to just highlight some of the things that researchers and people who have studied Boards of Education and Board members say that I think accounts for why our Board is an exceptional Board, and why we need at this time to take a moment to just recognize their fine work and their fine efforts here in Parkway. First of all, successful Boards make student learning and student achievement job one. And I think there's no doubt, if you watch our Board and understand their commitment to Project Parkway and the work of our, and you're going to hear more about that tonight, obviously, in terms of reports, they really are providing for learning opportunities, growth. They support Project Parkway, our mission, our commitments, and every time, you know, we meet here as a Board or special meetings or Project Parkway meetings, we emphasize awe, and we emphasize achievement, and also the success of students in so many different ways. Your leadership supports Parkway's diverse community and our enrollment, and again, achievement for all. Secondly, successful Boards allocate resources effectively and efficiently. We have a finite budget here in Parkway, and there are many needs, wants, and desires to satisfy, but this Board is insistent on a balanced budget. We build our, have been building our fund balance, and we really are building for the future so that we can do more, even though we certainly could always use more and more resources. But we do a very good job, and thanks for your support, and you're building a public trust. And certainly, it demonstrated in this past November that the community does trust us, trust the Board, trust the school district in their passage of our bond. Successful Boards, thirdly, successful Boards operate as a team. And as a former coach of mine once said, "There's no I in team." You fully recognize the skills of one another, you support one another, you don't always agree with one another, but in the end, you really make decisions that are in the best interest of the Parkway community, its students, our staff, and you do that in a way that really emphasizes, again, your input and your working together collaboratively. School Boards engage the public trust, they listen to the public, and they consider a wide range of public input and thought. And I know this particular Board is really trying to reach out to the community. We've tried to have more listening sessions and more activities where the community can weigh in. We communicate, anytime anybody comes to this podium, we communicate with them, and we certainly want to hear from Board, from the community, and we always value input and value that through letters back or communication from our President of Board Members. Successful Boards hold administrators, particularly the Superintendent accountable. This Board sets goals, and I would set goals with the Board, I evaluate on those goals, and this Board holds me and our administrative team accountable. I also want to just talk about this Board in terms of their diligence, in terms of reading and studying materials, they come to meetings prepared. You are learners, you take advantage of MSBA conferences, National School Board Materials, articles, and local seminars. You support innovation, and I think that's important in the world we live in today, and you support Parkway students in our community, and you are at the forefront of leading positive change. And finally, you are certainly champions of Parkway educators, knowing that our tradition and our successes all probably depend on what occurs each day in our classrooms between our teachers and our students. But I want to conclude my comments by calling out this Board and its members for champion public education. You go through, you do through your attendance at government relations meetings where you interact with legislators, trips to Jefferson City, Jeff Todd was just over in Jefferson City last week, communicating with legislators. You participate in communications advisory, PTO leadership, religious leaders, Project Parkway, and so much more in support of public education. This nation more than ever needs strong public schools, and so the best is brought out in our students, and our students compete in a global society. Our students possess the four Cs that we commit ourselves to, capable learners, curious, confident, and caring, and these are qualities that are going to be needed in the future. This Board is future-focused, knowing that the kindergarten students who are in our class today will graduate in 2031, just think about that, a world that is likely going to be different than the world we live in today. Some of you have kindergartners going to start next year, right? One thing is certain, public education in the Parkway School District will be around in 2031. Maybe not the same Board, maybe not the same administration, but hopefully, they'll be led by future Board Members whose leadership traditions have been shaped by these seven individuals and those that have come before them. I have had the pleasure in my over 35 years in public education and administration to work with a lot of Board Members and Boards. I think I can count about 65 individual Board Members I've had the pleasure of work with. And I just want to say publicly that this Board of Education in Parkway right now is one of the finest that I've had the pleasure of working with. They're hardworking, diligent, as I mentioned, but really do care about students and their work every day and throughout the year, and meetings certainly illustrates that. So again, on behalf of my administrative team, educators sitting behind me, the many employees of Parkway, our community, thank you for your Board service, thank you for the work that you do, and we want to congratulate you on this, again, belated recognition of our Board of Education. But I think they deserve a round of applause, and I hope, please join me in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for your kind words, and I think I speak for everyone on the Board when I say, oh, you probably say that to all the Boards. But we do appreciate it, and I think I can also speak for everyone that we do this because we love our school community and we want to do what's best for the kids in our community. So thank you.
Having just been at the National Conference of Superintendents, oftentimes, superintendents, of course, talk about their Boards, and sometimes it's not always positive, but I've got to tell you, I have nothing but praise for our Board, and I, again, want to thank you for the work that you do each and every day. Thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you to those who are left, certainly of all of our students or families and Parkway staff who've joined us this evening, and those parents who are still here. You have outstanding children and should be very proud of them. At this time, we would normally take a brief break, but I think we're going to continue on, and we'll move right along. So next on the agenda, 6.01, Addendum to Agenda Item 10 dot 11, Approval of Personnel Items. Next, we have Citizen Statements. Per the Citizen Sign-Up Sheet, I believe we only have one, so I will call that person down. That is Mia Schindler. Join us here at the podium.
Hello. So I am Mia Schindler, I'm a junior at Parkway South High. So I'm here today not only because my cool dad is at the podium there, but also because I'm in a class at Parkway South in the Teaching Career Pathway called Student Teaching, taught by Monica Dickens. So for that class, we are asked to attend a Board meeting. I have been to them before, but for this class, I do attend a specific one, to understand the education system better, especially in Parkway. So last semester in Intro to Teaching, we learned how to write lesson plans and get experience by going into the classroom and teaching a class. And this semester, in Student Teaching, we chose a cooperating teacher who we're able to be in the classroom with every day and teach multiple lessons. I just taught one last week, and learning through the relationships we build and the experiences we have. So the classes helped me feel confident in my pull toward a career in education, and it's given me experience that I wouldn't have gotten otherwise, and I honestly feel prepared enough that if it was possible for me to drop everything, I'd just teach right now. So even last week, my amazing cooperating teacher was out with the flu, and I woke up and found out that two hours later I'd be teaching a lesson. So that was fun. And then I hadn't seen, like, the lesson since I was in the class myself, but it was great, so that was good. It's put me in a position of a teacher, so I know what it's like, and it helps me figure, or it helps kids like me figure out that they're on the right track. So I'd just like to thank Ms. Dickens, who I would hope is watching at home right now, for taking a lead for the Teaching Career Pathway and for being my cooperating teacher, and of course, Parkway, Dr. Marty, the Board, for having these experiential teaching or learning opportunities to grow our passions and help us become even more capable, curious, competent learners in this ever-changing world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you tell her to say that? Next, may I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for February 20th, 2019. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The next regular Board meeting will take place on Wednesday, March 13th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School. An anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 PM. Board Candidate Filing. Four candidates have filed for the two open positions on Parkway's Board of Education. The candidates in order of filing and as their names will appear on the ballot are, and you may stand if you are here, Farida Hassan, Sam Scortino, Sudhir Rathad, and Pam Hill. Thank you. The election is Tuesday, April 2nd. The terms of Sudhir Rathad and Sam Scortino expire in April 2019. Board Liaison Reports. Let me start down there.
I, at this point, I attended a couple of events. I went to the Hana at Hannah Woods School. If you're unfamiliar with it, it's a sort of celebration of diversity, and there's also food. I tend to gravitate towards the events that provide international cuisine, and frankly, our meetings could learn a lot from the children of Hannah Woods. But there was a great event, and their principal was wonderful and gave me a tour of the school, and I feel like really got to know the event and the school, and it was really great to be, it was really great to be a part of it. I also, along with Dr. Marty, attended one session of the 4th Grade Strings Concert, I believe it was two weeks ago, at Parkway West. If you've never been, it's very impressive. There's two sections, but each of them, I think, had 400 or 500 kids performing together, and it was really great, and I brought my six-year-old son, who was also pretty impressed. Did we talk about subcommittee meetings in this part? We also had a subcommittee meeting for the Student Services Subcommittee, where we highlighted, we talked about a lot of Parkway's character education programs, which was very timely because it was the same week that a number of our schools were recognized at the state level for being schools of character. I also attended the Project Parkway meeting last week, which I think we'll get into further in the meeting, but Gina and Paul and Aaron Schulte did an excellent job of leading that discussion. I think it was a great opportunity to talk to the parents and stakeholders about what we're doing in that area, and also to get some valuable feedback as far as what other things we should be thinking about. And finally, not in my professional capacity, but as a parent, I attended the Craig School production of Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory two weeks ago, which was done by, put on by the music teacher, Mr. Skibby, and it was outstanding.
All right. I will just highlight, I attended the first meeting of the Parkway School District's Mental Health Task Force last month. So this is a task force that the district is pulling together in recognition that our students are coming to school and coming to learn with a lot more kind of going on in their lives, and a lot more of our students are needing some extra help, so our students are struggling a bit. And we're seeing that in our classrooms, and we're seeing that impact their ability to learn and be as successful as they can be. So as a district, we know we need to think about this problem more globally, and we need to think broadly and strategically about how we can support our students that they're able to bring their best selves to the classroom. I think we should all be proud that we're a district that's taking this on. This is something that we're certainly seeing across the state and across the country, and I'm proud that Parkway is not pretending it's not something, but is actually saying, no, we need to do this, and we need to do more. So that task force is meeting four times with the ambitious goal of coming up with some recommendations that we can consider implementing in Parkway. This is above and beyond what we're currently doing, which I think is already ambitious compared to, compared to some other school districts. So it's made up of teachers, administrators, PNEA, a couple of Board Members, as well as some community partners and parents, again, all coming together to think about this. So we had our first meeting, we have three more scheduled, and kind of looking forward to seeing where that group's going, but again, I think we should all be proud that we're a district that's not pretending that this isn't something, but is actually trying to think long and hard about what we can do to make sure we're supporting our students in all aspects of their life.
Okay. A number of weeks ago, I attended the All-District Choir Concert, which was held at the...
Percer Center.
Thank you. And there was something that I went to that I was wanting more of. The concert was only about 45 minutes long, which was just beautiful, and I was so proud of the students, and there were 12 students from each of the elementary schools that were selected, so they did have to audition for this, and it was just a lovely event and a great audience, and just really pleased to see that our music program here in Parkway is very strong. Also to let you know, I did also attend the TLA Subcommittee Meeting, which is always wonderful, led by Kevin Beckner and colleagues here, to talk about some of the endeavors that are taking place throughout the district with personalized learning and a number of other initiatives that are taking place there. As, on my governing council position with the Special School District, to let you know that there is currently a nationwide search taking place for a new superintendent for the Special School District. Dr. Bohannon submitted his resignation, well, his retirement, and we are, the SSD School Board of Education is currently underway to search for a new superintendent. There were a variety of efforts taken to receive feedback from the a variety of efforts taken to receive feedback from the community, key groups, superintendent groups throughout all of the 22 partnering districts. That feedback is probably a compilation of over 1,000 individuals and that is on the Special School District website. If you care to take a look and see what some of the key factors are that are going to be looked into hiring a new superintendent for the Special School District. And with that, we will also be undergoing on March the 4th, Board of Education election for the Special School District as well that evening.
I'll share two things. The first one being the Joint Legislative Breakfast we had, I think on February 1st. It was impressive to see Parkway was hosting, but Rockwood joined us, Pattonville joined us, and Special School District was also there. And the number of legislators that actually showed up for it. I was kind of, had low expectations, I guess. So, I was impressed to have them come out and have each district actually report out then to the different aspects and the challenges we all have as districts and working together. And the legislators were actually very responsive too and engaged in listening to our concerns. So, that was a good positive for me to see that. And then secondly, with the TLA Subcommittee, I did attend the Sorrento Springs Forum last week for the parents and the changes happened at Sorrento Springs of going to personalized learning as a whole school in two and a half years as a 2021 school year. And the fact that there are concerns, there is change coming, both the parents have expressed their concerns, teachers have their concerns, and it was a great forum to get those questions out. And I do commend Parkway for taking a lead in terms of coming out early with this initiative. And it's difficult because some of the concerns they have, they want answers to right now and we're still two and a half years away from giving them the answers they might need at this point. So, it was a great forum. We're glad the parents are engaged, but it is exciting time to see the personalized learning that's throughout Parkway right now coming together in one school. So, as a parent with a middle schooler and a high schooler, as a parent, if I had a younger one, I'd be excited about this because I think this school is going to get a lot of attention, especially from the Board, to see how this goes and to keep an eye on it because I think this will be a model for Parkway District, but also for the region. So, thank you.
Jeff and I attended the Project Parkway Steering Committee recently. It's always a great opportunity for us to hear what's happening in the district, along with some citizens and other Parkway staff members as well. It's a pleasure to be part of that and I've done that for the last several years since I guess it started. But one of the highlights, I want to thank Kevin Becker for the opportunity for us to interview and to be involved in the interview process of students, to get input from students regarding how they perceive their education in Parkway. This has been an ongoing thing over the last year and it's a very active process right now. But he invited us to go to a school and went to Ross School. And my partner and I, we basically interviewed two students who were delightful, a 5th grader and a 3rd grader. Very articulate, very impressive, very expressive as well. And essentially, the questions kind of deal with, first of all, you know, tell us about yourself. You know, that, that was kind of the, the opportunity to, to get them to warm up to us, which wasn't really that important to do because they were already there. But basically, such questions dealt with, you know, what are, what happens at school that really has an impact on your life out of school? That's a general area. Would you agree or disagree that your school is a caring place? And what things about your school that you're able to identify your curiosity and, and really study and explore ways to understand more of your curiosity about things in, in the world? So, that was a great experience. I wish I could do more and I probably can if I volunteer, I guess. But anyway, thank you very much, Kevin, for that opportunity. We really appreciate it. To piggyback on Kevin and regarding the All District Concerts, I attended the, the All District Concert and it was a choir concert, elementary, at Perser with a huge audience of parents and grandparents and friends and relatives. I was able to welcome everyone, but it was most impressive. I, I've gone to these concerts, All District Concerts, for all the years that I've been in Parkway, but every time, it's just so heartwarming to hear all these children singing their hearts out and to do it with such enthusiasm and excitement and what an opportunity for them. The Northeast Middle School Chor- Show Choir, I guess the Show Choir, performed and it was truly outstanding, tremendous. You wouldn't think middle school students could perform at that level, but it was truly outstanding overall. So, Jeff Lackey, we want to thank you. I mean, you, you're the coordinator and basically the person who makes great things happen, along with all the great teachers and staff that work with you and are so inspired to work with these children and help them to become tremendous artists, no matter if it's vocal music or instrumental or strings or even fine arts and practical arts. So, but thank you very much.
And, and I'll echo that as well because I, I was fortunate enough to attend that and it's always impressive. I'm looking forward to a strings concert similar in the next couple of weeks. I also, speaking of, of different arts, I attended the West Area Art Fair last month and got to see artwork from kids all over the, the West Middle, West High, Henry, Piermont, Claymont, a variety of elementary and, and all the way up. And just constantly impressed by the, the artwork that our kids put out. Stuff that 3rd graders are doing that I couldn't dream of doing as an adult. So, it's, it's very neat to see the vision that these kids have. Last month, I was also, also participated in the Spark Pitch Competition and I was fortunate to be a judge in that and got to hear some great ideas pitched by a number of our Spark kids. And even some middle schoolers are getting involved in Spark now. And one of the ones that stuck with me was a presentation by Grant Presson, who's a Bel Reeves student. And he, he pitched this idea of having an app that would track his school bus. So, he knew when it would, right before it would arrive at his house, so he wouldn't have to stand out in the rain or the cold or whatever. And I thought, that's, that's a pretty good idea. So, anyway, he did a great job, as they all did. Sam and I, Sam mentioned, we went to different schools interviewing students and that was, that was probably the highlight of my week, that particular week, a couple of weeks ago, just getting to sit down with some, with a few kids and just talk about, you know, what difference Parkway is making in their lives. So, that was neat. And as Dr. Marty mentioned, I spent a day last week meeting with legislators in Jeff City advocating for Parkway and public schools across Missouri with, with lots of other school board members from across the state. And I, I think that was the first time I'd been in the Capitol Building since an elementary school field trip from Mason Ridge. So, it was nice to be back, walking those halls and, and seeing the place from a different lens. So, that's all I got.
You pretty much mentioned the involvement. It's been, again, a busy time. It's going to continue to be busy up to, to spring break and thank you, Board, for all your support. You've really covered a wide range of activities here.
So, we have no official Subcommittee Reports. The next upcoming Subcommittee Meetings are Thursday, March 14th at 4:30 PM. Student Services Subcommittee will meet at ISC. And on Tuesday, March 26th at 4:30 PM, TLA Subcommittee Meeting will be held at ISC as well. 10.0 Action Items. We have quite a few, so I will not read them. They are all published. So, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agendas presented in the February 20th, 2019 Board Materials?
Second.
So, anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six zero. We have no action items. We have no policy review. So, we will move right into reports. And next, we will have the Parkway Achievement Report. And I would like to invite Carter Snow to join us, a Coordinator of Student Assessment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Todd, Vice President Sortino, members of the Board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Dover. It's my pleasure to stand in front of you again this evening to present Part Two of the Annual Achievement Report. As you know, this report provides information on the accountability measures the state and Parkway uses to monitor progress. And I also have a clicker. There we go. So, under the fifth cycle of Missouri School Improvement Program, our performance is rated according to five standards. The standards three through five, I've previously reported on early on in, in November, and now we'll report on Standards One and Two. Taken collectively, all five standards earned us a score of 98.9% of the possible points awarded through MCIP 5. I guess I am the Coordinator of Student Assessment, so I can say that is a plus.
[laughing]
The only standard, standard we didn't earn all of the possible points was our subgroup achievement. This serves as a good reminder that even if we attain 100% of the possible points, we might still fall short of meeting our mission for all students. As a quick review of Standards Three through Five, we'll remember that we have more students than ever taking AP exams. Our ACT scores continue to be well above the state average. Our attendance rate continues to meet above the 90% goal set by the state. And then finally, the Class of 2018 achieved a four-year graduation rate of 94.9%, which is the highest rate we've seen in the past six years. So, now we get to dive in a little bit closely into Standards One and Two, now that we have the scores back. So, you will see evidence of how MCIP 5 achievement on state exams relates to our strategic plan and measurable objectives. And evidenced by some of your, some of your Liaison Reports, you, you've been involved in Goal One interviews. We know that we are measuring aspects of our measurable, our strategic plan that don't just show up on test scores. So, actually interviewing students and talking with them and asking them about their school experience. But one of those points in our measurable objectives in the Goal One is all about state achievement. And so, that's what we're going to look at this evening. Standard One of the Missouri School Improvement Program is student achievement. Student achievement is measured in ELA and math via MAP assessments in 3rd through 8th grade and end-of-course exams in high school. Achievement in Social Studies is measured on the government end-of-course exam in high school. And finally, science is typically measured in grades 5, 8, and in biology. However, last year was a field test for a new assessment, so we didn't get scores back for science. So, that won't be included in tonight's report. And as a part of that, you probably know that before we dive into our results, it's important to note the significant changes our state assessment system has undergone in the past four years. The changes, along with long delays in receiving scores, does make it difficult to monitor progress from one year to another and quickly respond to those scores. So, tonight, as we look at overall achievement for the district, you're not going to see a lot of line graphs because lines communicate change over time. And that's one thing that the state has recommended we not do is compare this year, this past year's scores in 2018 to previous years because the assessment itself was so different. And so, we're really comparing ourselves to the state as one way to look at, are we making progress? It's, it's insufficient way, but it's what we have for tonight. So, under MCIP 5, district performance is calculated using the MAP Performance Index, or MPI. If you remember, MPI is calculated by taking the number of students who are advanced times 500, the number of students who are proficient times 400, basic times 300, below basic times 100. You divide by that, by the total number of students and you get a three-digit number, which is MPI. It's a different way of looking at percent proficient because if you just look at percent proficient, it just gives you an idea of students who meet that threshold without really giving credit for, well, how many students are we moving from proficient to advanced and from below basic to basic, which is progress. So, in other words, if half of the students were proficient, the other half were advanced, our score would be 450, just for reference. So, this graph shows performance in English Language Arts and we'll see that students continue to outperform the state on average. The difference in performance between the state and Parkway decreased only slightly in 2018 with the new assessment. In math, the difference between the state and performance in Parkway, performance stayed very similar from 2017 to 2018. And then performance in Social Studies evaluated again on that government end-of-course exam. You'll notice that the difference between the state and Parkway is smaller, but also achievement is a bit higher. So, there's a bit of a ceiling effect. Students are doing well on that government exam. However, this is the last year for that government EOC because this year, we're, we're piloting a new government EOC and so we won't get scores next year for that exam, but it will be a new assessment aligned to new standards. So, Standard Two under MCIP 5 is all about gap group achievement. The gap group, sometimes referred to as the super subgroup, is comprised of the following students. So, students who would identify as African-American, Hispanic, students who are learning the English language, students with an IEP, or students who receive free and reduced lunch. For context and reference, the following slides will show how Missouri students in the gap group performed when compared to Parkway students in the gap group. And finally, how those students performed when compared to the total Parkway average. So, we'll see Missouri students in the gap group, Parkway students in the gap group, and then all Parkway students. In the following slides, you'll observe that Parkway students in the gap group continue to outperform similar students in the state, but obviously lower than the district average. That said, our mission states that all students will be capable. Any measurable gap in performance calls for continued problem solving and action by all educators on the behalf of students to address this gap in achievement. So, when we look at ELA, as you can see, there remains a measurable achievement gap, though the size of the gap remained relatively constant from 2017. In math, students in the gap group are not performing at the same level of their peers. The size of the achievement gap in math has actually grown very slightly with a new assessment in this past year. There is also evidence of the achievement gap in government end-of-course exam. Typically, in this exam, we'll see a bit more variability in the score because it's only one grade level of students who are taking this exam. So, there might be a cohort effect. So, while students not in the gap group performance remain relatively constant, that top R is pretty level, students in the gap group performance decreased somewhat significantly. So, overall, this performance report highlights the quality work our students, teachers, and administrators are engaged in on an ongoing basis. Though there's much to celebrate, we will not realize our mission and vision until all students are capable, confident, curious, and caring learners. We fully embrace the challenge that our mission presents and will continue to thoughtfully problem solve and take action where action is needed. So, as we typically conclude something like this, I often offer that these data rarely provide us with all the answers, rather than give us the opportunity to ask better questions. So, with that in mind, what questions do you have?
This might not be for you, Carter, more of this question than the statement, but I appreciate, well, I appreciate what you just said, that data just gives us data and it causes us to ask questions. So, you know, to your point about the, the gap group, we're, you know, needing to have pointed conversations about, you know, if we continue to kind of equitably offer opportunities, then we will, we'll never actually close the gap. Hopefully, we'll improve everybody, but the gap remains, which we don't think is acceptable. So, where do we have the conversation specifically about what extra do we need to do or what do, what do we need to do differently so that all of those students are performing up to the, the standards that they can perform to? I guess I'm just not sure where we talk about that and I want to make sure we're calling it out. So, we're not just recognizing that it's an issue and hoping that it fixes itself. So, I, I guess I'm just pondering when and where and how we ask ourselves those questions.
Yeah. Obviously, those are, those are the difficult questions that we have to, that we have to ask. It's confronting that brutal reality that there is an achievement gap in Parkway. Of course, that achievement gap is in other districts as well as in the state, but our mission doesn't say some, right? Our mission says all. And so, you know, while I can't speak holistically about every place that conversation happening, I can, I can point to a few examples that I've experienced recently, as, as recent as this afternoon, in our administrators' meeting where we're actually talking about disproportional rates of suspension for students with an IEP, for African-American students and really investigating that. Where do we begin problem solving for that? And how does that relate to achievement? Well, as we know, students have to be in the classroom to learn. And so, if we have behavior as adults that's certainly, certainly not intentional, but some unconscious bias that presents itself in how we treat students and how we respond to behaviors that might prevent them from learning- that might prevent them from learning, that's an opportunity for us to have that conversation. It also presents itself a lot within just the classroom when teachers actually respond to students' needs, right? So we don't want to wait till MAP scores to recognize that there is achievement gap. And so we want to be having those conversations on an ongoing basis within our collaborative learning teams and our professional learning communities to say, how do we make sure we meet all students' needs? You know, it's really question three, which is, what do we do when our students don't learn? And so that's the conversation that we're having in an ongoing manner in our schools. But also, a part of the conversation we're having is district leadership about how we address overall achievement gaps. And I was able to present these data to our principals as well today to say, what questions do we need to be asking to really dive a bit more deeply? And let's just not live on the surface. Let's actually get into the data, do a little bit of inquiry, and figure out what's going on, you know? Because as you mentioned, to close the achievement gap, we actually have accelerated growth for students in the gap group, not just meeting the same amount of growth. So that's what we have to work towards.
Actually, along the same lines real fast, just looking ahead, are there other districts that are similar districts to us that are actually closing the gap? And are there things that we can take from them to bring to Parkway to help close that gap that's on there?
Yeah, so, you know, I certainly think there's opportunity to learn from other districts about what their action plans have been. I am aware of a few districts that I've spoke to in terms of they have more defined action plan to address the achievement gap. Is there overwhelming abundance of evidence to say this district is closing it, this district is not? Not that I've seen, but I think that is an opportunity for us to partner with schools and say, this is not a Parkway problem, this is a nationwide problem, and we need the most creative minds. And while we have a lot of good folks here and behind me, we think that that's another opportunity to really work towards, you know, meeting, which is really all of our missions is all students, right?
I would just add that, you know, one of the things that really comes down to is opportunities. And Equal Opportunities Initiative that we've been involved in the last couple of years has got more students into AP and more students taking the AP exam. Now, that's juniors and seniors. So what do we do to try to give more opportunities to our younger students so that that gap is closed earlier? But I think, as Carter says, we have data meetings where we put data in front of our principals, and we talk about, you know, all kinds of issues related to mobility. You know, one of the things was, as we look at those year to year, we're not necessarily talking about the same students. Parkway increasingly has more mobility, so, and so, you know, it's not the same students that we're talking about. Unfortunately, a lot of the students that are in, you know, those categories, the super subgroup, are students that are coming and moving quite a bit. So that's a challenge to us, and I think our principals would, you know, say, we've grown student achievement, but then we have, you know, a lot of new families moving in, and we try to do our best to, you know, intervene and work with those families. So that's not an excuse, that's just some of the reality I think we're facing here, and I think a lot of districts do. I think a lot of the work that's being done with our IEP students, because students with IEPs is evident, I think, in a lot of discussions going on in some of the action teams and some of the work that is being done. So just to reinforce what Carter says, it's constant, but we're disappointed we're not seeing more progress because I think there's a lot of effort, but we have to keep studying and working. And, you know, I think one of the things we're realizing is just those opportunities. We need to provide as much intervention and opportunities as we can to students at an early age, whether that's early childhood, whether that's in the early years of literacy, but try to provide those opportunities. Summer school registration starts tomorrow. We hope a lot of families will take advantage of summer school, so there's not that summer slide that a lot of students experience.
I think not underestimating where recruitment plays into this too. And I know we have efforts around recruitment and making sure that our teacher and staff population mirrors our student population, but I think that there's some fairly recent research out that's, it's new but not particularly shocking, around one of the greatest indicators of success for boys of color is having an elementary school teach, male elementary school teachers of color. And I know that we're looking at our recruitment and looking at how we can do better in terms of, you know, but I think putting even more effort into that and making sure that students see themselves reflected in their school communities. Yeah, I just don't want to lose sight that it's not just kind of what's happening with people that are in those schools now today, but how we set up school environments in such a way that students see themselves in it and have role models and have all of that. So it stretches into other kind of areas of our mission and areas of what we need to do as well.
I think your points are well-received and very valid. I think, you know, part of that challenge is recognizing, and pardon the expression, but, you know, there's not going to be a silver bullet to address the achievement gap, and it's more like silver buckshot, right? So we really have to have multiple approaches to work on this. And so the way that we looked at it with principals today was using a model called iCell. So the instruction, the curriculum, the environment that kids learn in, the students themselves, we want to make sure we have this kind of ecological view of what impacts student achievement and what contributes to that achievement gap. Dr. Marty might add structures to iCell, so it's got to be iCells now. But really understanding holistically, like, where do we need to actually make change to impact this? And then, when we do, ensuring that we're monitoring progress to make sure that's having the impact that we hoped it would, right?
And I mean, I offer all that with great respect for everything we are working on doing and trying to do, just thinking about how do we keep pushing ourselves to make sure that all of our kids are...
I'd also like to say that while we look seriously at this achievement report, I mean, that's one test, one indicator, how many hours of, you know, devoted compared to, a lot of Carter's work is around district assessments that we really count on to give us a lot of information as well. So I don't know if you want to speak to, you know, ninety-five percent of your work is really not along this line, it's really working with teachers and making sure we're doing the right kind of work, the right kind of assessments.
Yeah, it's giving teachers the actionable information to respond right then, right? So as soon as we know a student's not learning a concept, we want to jump in and provide targeted support for those students. And if there's a major gap, we need to actually provide even more intensive support. So as you know, some of you have seen Tableau, we're designing new risk reports. So every time an elementary student takes a district benchmark assessment or unit assessment, that their score is incorporated into overall risk score in ELA and math. And so that gives us actionable information right away to say, whoa, this student looked like they were on track, and now these things are not quite going as well as we thought. So we want to actually be able to respond immediately for those student concerns, and we think that's going to really leverage the power of that relationship between our teachers and our students to get in there and address any issue right away, rather than, you know, by the time the MAP test comes around in, oh, gosh, in April and May, it's almost here. So that we, and then a following year later, we get the results and say, okay, we got to do something different. We want to be really responsive to student needs.
So how does student ability play into this? Because if a student has an IEP and they're achieving all the objectives within their IEP, they're coming to school, they're motivated, they're working, they're all around good kids, but they're not achieving at the level that the student next to them is achieving. So doesn't that mean the student's achieving? Doesn't that, I mean, could we say that the student is no longer in the achievement gap, they're achieving according to their ability?
Yeah, so one of the aspects of this assessment, which we don't often talk about, is the MAP A assessment. So there are some students who receive the alternative form of the MAP assessment. It's more of an ongoing process of assessment. These are students really with significant cognitive impairment who, you know, have disabilities related to their cognitive ability. And so when I say that, it's not an easy test, and so our students are really challenged to do well on that. That said, students who don't receive MAP A, many of those IEP goals are actually going to be working towards, giving them on the appropriate grade level, learning these skills. That may be very similar to their peers, and so that is a high level of expectation. But again, as our mission would call, that's something that we embrace.
It seems that many of the students in the gap basically have ability, but their achievement is not commensurate with it. Their absences are great, basically they're not motivated, they're not focused, they have other issues. So I think that's a good portion of that group in the achievement gap, other than the students who just have cognitive disabilities.
Yeah, I think, it does. So I think that's some insight maybe those Goal One interviews are setting light on is that when we ask students about how are you able to transfer what you learn in school outside of school, really getting it relevant for students, we want to make sure that what we're providing to students is relevant to them so that they are motivated. So that, as to borrow a phrase from Mrs. Hopper, which is, is school working for kids or are kids working for school, right? So we really do want our school system and Parkway to meet the individual needs of students so that they really do see the value of their education and do get more engaged. And I say that knowing that I worked in middle school and high school, and that can be a real challenge at times when, you know, you're talking to a ninth grader about mitochondria. They're thinking, well, why does this matter to me, right? But that is our challenge as educators, is how do we make it relevant enough so that we do engage students in the schooling process? They do see value in that, and they achieve at the level that we think they can.
Yeah, great, thanks.
You know, Carter and Kevin Beckner are pretty active in some of the new work around the state on the Missouri Assessment Program. And one of the things that we're looking at is wanting to, you know, we're not going to get away from these tests because there's the new federal law that's going to continue this, but can Missouri really do something different? We're seeing states around us that are really starting to look differently at assessments, and I think some of those, you know, rather than have assigned time when, you know, when students are ready to take an assessment, you know, why does it have to be in April? Maybe they're ready to take that assessment in December when they just have gone, had some of the learning, and now we postpone it. So I mean, it gets back to personalized learning that Matt was talking about, you know, can we more personalize assessment as well? You know, does it all have to be based on this time when we're ready as adults, or when it's more based on student readiness and student ability to really be motivated to take that assessment? So I don't know if you, I know we don't want to get too far into that, but I know you're involved, Kevin is involved with a lot of educators around the state.
Yeah, I think we recognize that, you know, annual assessment's not a perfect solution for all students in all districts, and so we know that we're always going to be held accountable. We welcome that accountability because we want to be right by all our students. But once a year may not be effective in terms of giving us the information we need to adjust course along the way, as well as, not all students are taking the right test at the right time. You might have a third grader that might perform well on that fifth grade assessment and vice versa. And so how are we assessing students where they are? It really gets to achievement versus growth, right? So we can measure both of those things. We're pretty good at measuring achievement, but we also want to recognize when a student is making accelerated growth, that we can honor that and say, you're on the track towards mastery, and you're actually, you know, we want to be able to communicate that to students and parents as well.
We could talk about this all night.
We could.
And I promise I won't do that, but I do have two questions I want to ask. At one of our retreats, I think it was, I know we delved into some of these statistics pretty deeply, and it made everybody's head swim because you can get so deep into this information. But my big question is, my overall question is, when, do you pull this out by school? So because I understand that the way that special services are administered amongst different schools is different. So what a study hall looks like in one school may look different at another school. So I'm wondering if, how you do that, are you looking at the individual schools to see where there might be successes at some schools that could be then applied to another school to reevaluate how are our students with special needs being taught? And do we have successes somewhere that we could bring to another school?
We do, actually. So that's actually the first data we were able to provide. Once we got the assessment scores back, we immediately got those into our data warehouse in Tableau and sent those out to district administrators as well as school principals, and we're able to provide that feedback of where are they in relation to other schools in the district? How did that change from 2017? And then the ability to really drill down into, for students with an IEP, what did that change look like? For African-American students, for students on free and reduced lunch, for Asian students. And so administrators are able to really compare themselves to other schools. And then we do see reaching out and saying, hey, I noticed that you made significant improvement here, so talk to me about your programming, talk to me about what you're doing, how you're approaching student learning, how you're using our district benchmark assessments and results to really inform practice. And so just like a collaborative team you would have with a group of, you know, eighth grade ELA teachers, we have a similar collaborative team with our high school principals and our middle school principals and elementary school principals, and we do that through our Goal One meetings as one opportunity to have those conversations.
Okay, good. My second question is, I see where you talked about AP tests, and there's more students that are taking the Advanced Placement test. How much is that related to a recent initiative that took place? And Dr. Marty, have to help me remember what that is.
EOS, Equal Opportunity Schools, I think.
Yes, yes, yes. And are you able to evaluate that in comparison to this, to say that that's part of what is causing these AP tests to, you know, the participation in them go up?
Yeah, actually, we have, and we built a little dashboard around that. So really, understanding that we have more students than ever enrolled in AP courses, and the students who are enrolled are also taking more of the exams themselves. So there's really two levels of that. One, it's make sure we have more students in that, in the program, and our EOS really helps us do that. So it helps identify students who might be successful in that course, have conferences with those students, make that recommendation. It might be the first time they've been recommended for more of an advanced course, and so that can be a tough conversation for a high school sophomore, junior, or senior. And so it's really encouraging them to do so, providing them support along the way, and then also monitoring, are they taking the exam at the end of the course and taking the AP test, which can, of course, get them college credit in that area? And so while we see participation specifically for the Equal Opportunity School group increasing, the participation in the exam hasn't climbed quite as steeply specifically for that group, but that's something we're continuing to kind of press and evaluate when we want to make sure they're ready to take that test as well. What's interesting, though, is that while both participation in the course and exam has increased, our scores haven't decreased at all. So I think it just goes to show that with a little bit of encouragement, the students can do well in those courses, and they can achieve high on that exam.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Carter.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Now, we would like to introduce a number of people to give us an update on Project Parkway 2.0. Chelsea Watson, Deputy Superintendent, Kevin Beckner, Assistant Superintendent of TLA, Gina Pacini, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Patty Bedborough, our CFO, and Amy Joyce, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Get comfy. No, it's not going to be that long.
It's going to be this long, right?
No, see, that's the long version. You're going to get the short version tonight. All right, good evening, President Todd, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. We have an exciting evening for you tonight. And for those of you who were around in 2016, you will remember on June 8th, we adopted an updated mission by adding the word caring. June 8th, 2016, does everybody know where they were on that evening? Many of us were here, excited to talk about our new mission based on the listening tours and the feedback that we received from our community. So we have been working on three goals most recently: a goal around students, a goal around staff, and a goal around resources. Working with goal leaders, action team leaders, to make sure that we are following our plan, looking carefully at our measurable objectives in order to see outcomes, to be effective with Goal One, Two, and Three, but most importantly, our Parkway mission. So tonight, you're going to hear from our goal leaders. We've been asking ourselves, how are we doing? Are we doing well? Are we doing what's in the best interest of our students? And Mia, I have to say thank you. Because I think we could probably sit down, because what I heard in Mia's citizen statement was evidence of Goal One with a number of those measurable objectives. I heard Goal Two, measurable objective Three in her statement, and I also heard a little bit about Goal Two, I'm sorry, Goal Three, measurable objective Two. So Mia, thank you, you did some work for the goal leaders here tonight. But to me, that was an amazing performance event as I listened to her, thought about our goals, and the work that we're doing in our schools.
Plus, she's fairly confident, too.
Part of Goal One, absolutely, absolutely. So you're going to hear from Gina and Kevin tonight with Goal One. Then you're going to hear a little bit about Goal Two with Amy and Kevin, and Goal Three with Patty and Amy. And clearly, you have all read the report, so please know, as we give this report to you and all of our patrons and community members watching, we want to give a overview, but of course solicit any questions at the end. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to introduce Goal One. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to introduce Goal One.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Watson, members of the board. We're very grateful to present on Goal One this evening. Dr. Watson referenced our previous strategic plan, which separated out capable, curious, confident, all as separate goals. In Project Parkway 2.0, we've combined those all into one student goal where we want students to positively engage in an ever-changing world. And one of the other nice things about having a strategic plan like we have in Project Parkway is it really does provide us focus. So, one of the great things about this particular presentation tonight is that much of the information is familiar to you and it's familiar to you because we don't put our strategic plan on a shelf and then forget about it. We really work on our strategic plan and we come back to it and we focus on it. So, much of the information you'll be hearing tonight about Goal One are things that you're already aware of because these are continual focus for us here in Parkway. We do have six measurable objectives under Goal One and you will also notice, I'm not going to read through all of them, but some of these objectives deal with teaching and learning with the TLA department here in Parkway and others deal with student services. And we know that we need our students to be whole children, that they aren't just learners, they don't just show up and, and study and leave, but they're people, that we want our graduates to be capable, curious, caring, confident. We want them to be prepared for the ever-changing world. We know that doesn't just mean book smarts, but that means a lot of other things that they are really well-rounded people. So, to begin, we'll start actually with Dr. Pacchini and the student services side of it. So, I will hand it over to Gina.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, excuse the laryngitis voice, but so, one of the ways that we do help students reach these measurable objectives, of course, is by supporting their social, emotional and physical well-being. So, we're going to report tonight on some of the progress that we've made in that area. So, we're going to start with our suicide and prevention training and intervention training. So, this year, all of our staff members have been trained in suicide prevention and intervention. We've also added four elementary behavioral specialists and TAs to our group. We've expanded the oral healthcare project to include all elementary schools. We've increased in our volunteers for the Parkway Food Pantry. That was one that we really needed to work on, so we do have an increase there. We have also received some national recognition for our school-wide social justice training. We earned this recognition as one of five districts in the U.S. to win the National School Board Association's Magna Award of Innovation. We've also expanded our school-wide trauma-informed care training from three schools to 10 schools. We just keep increasing. We've increased our schools of character from 11 to 14 and our leader in me Lighthouse Schools from two to three. We did have some decreases. We're very, very happy to report, we have decreases in out-of-school suspensions and we have decreases in episodes of anaphylaxis caused by sharing of food in the classroom to zero. So, this gives you a little idea of the new schools of character and the new leader in me Lighthouse Schools. So, our new schools of character that have been added to the long list, our Central High School, West Middle School, Hannah Woods and McKelvey Elementary have been recertified. We wanted to mention that we did have another school that did receive honorable mention for their work in, in character education, which means they're on the road to becoming a national or state school of character and that is West High School. Leader in me Lighthouse Schools, we've added Henry Elementary and also Belle Reeve Elementary has been recertified. Excuse me. Just to give you an idea of the number of schools that have participated this year in trauma-informed care, so we do have quite a few. We've expanded 10 above the three, so we now have 13 schools who are working in that So, some current work and future direction. As Kevin said, a lot of this is repeat information for you, but we would like to share that we are continuing to provide ongoing staff training around behavior prevention, environmental management and de-escalation techniques for all staff. It'll be a plan that we hope to roll out over three years, but we are starting pending, oh no, we already started tonight with board approval of consent items to begin that training for all staff here in March and again in summer and then continuing on every semester for teachers. We're also expanding the school-wide training around trauma-informed care, so we, we want to be able to continue to add to the work. So, we'll expand to hopefully nine schools next year and then the remaining schools the following year. Just today, we polled all of the principals to find out who would be willing to start the next go-around. And so, we, we do have, as you saw in that previous slide, we had a number of elementary schools and a number of middle schools, so we want to increase it, especially in the middle school and the high school area. And so, that is a push that we're going to ask for as well. You heard a little bit already today about the mental health task force and Christie told you much of what we're doing there, but again, it was initiated to better understand the mental health needs of our students. And then by the end of April, we're going to make recommendations for responding to those needs. So, we're really looking forward to that work. Continuing on, something very exciting is our Diversity in Action Committee has put together a summer institute. And Christie, this is part of answering your question on some things that we can do for students, particularly students of color who come from culturally diverse backgrounds. So, this summer, we'll have a culturally, an institute for administrators and teachers around culturally responsive teaching. So, these would be practices that engage students by connecting to and honoring their cultural backgrounds, their cultural experiences, language, et cetera. So, not only do we meet social, emotional and physical well-being, but we can also teach students in, with pedagogy that recognizes where they come from. So, that is very exciting. We're going to begin that this summer and hopefully expand that as well. We have added some middle school personnel for student social, emotional needs that will be coming. High school process, that's the next, the next step in the social, emotional, learning journey. We are meeting with high school principals to determine a process for making a decision on what supports would look like in the high school level for student social, emotional needs. We were able to do that first with elementary by adding the four specialists and, excuse me, and so now we are engaging those conversations, what would this really look like at high school? What should it look like for high school students? And so, we hope to have by the end of this year, some recommendations from the high school group around that as well. So, we have both the task force and that high school group that we can move forward with some recommendations on how to support students at that level. And that's what I have. Kevin, to you.
Well, again, with our measurable objectives, I want to focus on our next part, on really measurable objective one where students will ask and pursue meaningful questions because we have some really exciting things happening all over our district. But one of those areas is the area of STEM and you might have seen recently some of the things that we've been doing around STEM because we've gotten some positive publicity around them because they are very exciting, happening both in our classrooms but also some district events. You might have seen our STEM Saturday program, which I know we're all aware of here, but for those in the audience who might not be, we've got a partnership with the Normandy School District where Parkway students and Normandy students have signed up to gather on all the Saturdays during February. So, we have the last event coming up this weekend that'll be at JA out in Chesterfield Valley where students will be participating in a game-a-thon, a really incredible initiative where we've got a lot of Parkway students, a lot of Normandy students working together, our teachers working together and collaborating. And we see students doing some really amazing work. This picture was taken over at Parkway Central High School a few weeks ago. The winter weather onslaught, we've been having, lost one of our weeks unfortunately, but students have still been having a really amazing and engaging time, engaging with STEM. We had 200 students sign up almost immediately for only 100 spots from, from Parkway, which was just incredible. At first, like giving up four Saturdays in February, I don't know, that's kind of a tall, tall ask, but we certainly had a lot of student interest and our students are asking great questions and exploring STEM. We've also got coming up our STEM Fest, which is a really incredible opportunity for lots of students to do really hands-on, engaging learning that's over at Southwest Middle. We've got tons of community partnerships and people who come in and give students just a real wide array of experiences with different things from virtual reality to, to low-tech ways that they can engage their minds around STEM. We, this year, in our classrooms, also brought in Project Lead the Way as our primary resource for our elementary science curriculum. So, we see students engaged in really hands-on learning in all of our elementary classrooms around science, which has been an incredible journey for our students and our staff to really make sure that we're making STEM alive so that students can see that in action and ask and pursue those meaningful questions and really get more and more curious about the things that they're doing. I don't, the next one is so new, I don't even have a slide for it. We actually are going to also have a STEM event in partnership with the St. Louis Football Club, the minor league soccer team that plays out at, I no longer know what it is called, but Soccer Park, whatever currently Soccer Park is called. So, we'll be having more information about that, but just know that we continue to have more and more opportunities for students to really engage both during the school day and outside the school day so that they can ask and pursue those meaningful questions. We also have talked a little bit about personalized learning and, and Mrs. Hopper's getting all the props for this question that she asked at last meeting because it really was an excellent and challenging question. Does school work for children or do children work for school? And so, we know that we've been on a long-term journey and we are continuing on a long-term plan to personalize learning for our students in Parkway. That started with our listening tour, but still certainly continues with questions like this. And when we asked the question, "What should learning look like by 2028?", we heard, we heard some things from our community and I'll pull out a few of them just so we can see them. One, we know that our community said, "It's not okay for kids to just be on screens. They have to know how to interact with each other. They have to develop those real-world skills that they will need both in our classrooms but in life beyond school." So, that's certainly something that when we think about personalized learning, we're not just going to be putting students on a computer and have an algorithm tell us what we need them to do or really want to be student-centered. There are a couple of other keywords we want to pull out, though. Individualized, customized, flexible. And we have our teachers doing amazing things in our classrooms. To try to do this work, unfortunately, our classrooms were really designed for standardization and not for personalization. All students get 180 days to learn. All students get largely the same amount of minutes in a day. All students experience the same learning largely, they take the same tests at the same time. So, we're really trying to figure out how do we make learning individualized, customized, flexible for students? And while we do that, that doesn't mean students get to learn whatever they want to because our community also said, "We have to maintain a really high level of learning for students." So, even in personalized learning, we're talking about rigorous Parkway curriculum and ensuring that all students learn at the high levels we've come to expect here in Parkway, but how do we do that in a way that is flexible, individualized, customized, so that we really can meet every student's need here in Parkway? Through that process of looking that, we, we have the Personalized Learning Task Force of which you all received the report from that task force back in December of 2017. And one of the things that Task Force did was design Parkway's personalized learning model. That's important because if you Google personalized learning right now, you will get 100 different definitions of what personalized learning is. So, we had to say, "Well, what do we mean when we say that in Parkway?" So, we've got really key things like students have to still master competencies, there has to be real meaningful learning, but then we want them to demonstrate that learning in authentic ways. We want them to, to explore their interests and be able to pursue their passions. We want their voice to become central in the classroom and we want to really honor and offer learning that doesn't just happen within our walls, but happens everywhere. That's a real challenge. The Task Force also gave us two key recommendations of things we should do moving forward. One, over the long term, make sure that we bring personalized learning to all of our schools and that's the tall task. The Task Force said five to seven years. We will not make five to seven years because this now is really 2028 and a long-term journey of how we get there. But in the meantime, part of how we can get there is creating proof of concept models, meaning we need to have places where personalized learning is happening in action. How do we give teachers, principals, parents a place to go and actually see, "You say you're doing this, but, but show me what it looks like." So, we have to have places where we can say, "It is happening here. It is intentionally designed to happen in this place." And we're in the process of developing those models. Now, so we've turned that, those two recommendations into pictures and this is how we've been talking with our leaders about this. On the one side, over the long term, really think about a field. You have to cultivate the soil. You have to make sure the conditions are right. You got to make sure you have the right crops. You have to do everything really to make sure that it's sustainable and that it grows over the long term, but in that field, there's things you can't control. You can't control the weather, can't control if there's a hard freeze, can't control if it floods, can't control if there's a plague of locusts. You can't control a lot of things, but you can if it's in a greenhouse. And that's really what we're thinking about in terms of our model programs. How do we create an opportunity where we can really personalize learning for students in a way where we can say, "We know that there's going to be challenges, but at the start, so that we can get this going, let's, let's create the conditions that we know are going to be right for personalized learning to flourish." So, part of our long-term plan this year is really growing our leaders. It's not okay for this to be a me-led initiative or a TLA-led initiative or a Dr. Marty-led initiative. It has to be shared leadership. It has to have it in our buildings, in our schools, in student services, across the district. And so, we've really been focused on growing our leaders. That means every principal meeting, assistant principal meetings, Goal One focus meetings, we have time just to learn together about personalized learning. What does this look like? What are, what are existing programs doing? How can this happen? What are the concepts? What do they mean for us? In the short term, we know that it's a heavy lift. I've shared this analogy with you before. Status quo is really like gravity, like it will pull you back down to earth. Whatever you're doing now will try to keep you doing what you're doing. So, to get out of the atmosphere to overcome gravity, it takes a lot of energy. It takes a lot of effort. It takes a lot of planning. It takes a lot of preparation and as this rocket's going up, if at any time it lets up and doesn't keep applying that energy, it will come back down. So, we know that this is going to be a long-term process by which we're really going to have to be focused and applying a lot of energy and effort and resources to make sure that we can personalize learning for all of our students. So, then in the short term, where we think about our model programs, specifically thinking about elementary, we had to ask, "So, where should a model program be?" So, we looked at some things. We considered different models, like should it be like a grade level? Should it be like a couple of teachers kind of trying something? And ultimately, we said, "No, if we want this to be successful, we need to do a school where we can recreate the structures that happen in school." So, we really thought about, "So, how big are our current schools? What's their projected size, not just today, but where will they be in a few years? Is there any specialized programming there?" We know some of our schools have maybe Mosaics Academy or the Deaf Heart of Hearing Program or, or different specialized programs. We also thought about number of staff. We also thought about physical space because we know personalized learning might require us to do actually things differently with students. And that's where Mr. Schindler actually referenced earlier. Sorrento Springs actually checks all of the boxes that we really looked at and so that's why we are pursuing Sorrento Springs and as our personalized learning sort of proof of concept school. When's that going to happen, though? We are currently about here on this timeline and it's not going to happen this year and it's not going to happen in that year and it's not going to happen in that year. So, we're really looking at the 2021, 22 school year. We're still a ways out, but if we want this to be successful, we have to plan intentionally. We have to develop staff. We have to make sure that all the resources are in place. We have to do it really well, but we did start that conversation this week, both with the Sorrento staff and with the Sorrento community. So, we can certainly talk more about that and will, but we also want to mention some other Goal One-related things. We talked last month about student interviews and thank you very much, Dr. Sorrentino and Mr. Todd for participating in those. And yes, certainly you're all invited and can sign up. I'm happy to share with you the signup. We're always looking for people to come talk to our students because we know it's an ever-changing world and a lot of the things that we need to do here are not things that show up in our test scores that we looked at earlier tonight. So, we need to actually talk to our kids. We did a whole bunch of stuff. We randomly sampled, we draw our kids, we go talk to them. We say, "Hey, if you don't want us to talk to your student," we ask parents, "That's fine." And we're trying to talk to about 400 students this year. My daughter was one of them when we first started. We've had a great time talking to kids, both in elementary school all the way up through high school and we'll continue to learn from them. We know that we need different versions for each level, clear rubric, training, all these processes have to be in place, but really the whole point of this is we need to talk to our kids and figure out, "Are we doing what we need to do to reach Goal One? Are we helping them be the kinds of people who can achieve our mission and vision?" And then you heard earlier tonight about measurable objective six from Carter Snow, which is about our state test scores. He shared about all those things and the fact that we did earn 98.9% of possible points. So, yes, though, we have achievement gaps, we have a lot to celebrate in Parkway and be proud of and around that measurable objective, we can say we've got a lot to celebrate there as well, even as we continue to work hard. That is Goal One, so I'm going to hand it off to Amy Joyce with Goal Two.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm excited to talk-
I'm excited to talk about Goal Two and the amazing staff that we have here in Parkway. And we have five measurable objectives that we look at when we talk about Goal Two. With measurable objective one, we want to make sure that we are competitive in the education industry. And in the report that I submitted to the Board of Education, there was a lot of data. I won't go through all of the data and all of the slides. You can say thank you now, but I'll just go over some of the highlights. You know, one of the things that we look at is our benefits. And the percent of our operating expenses for benefits versus some of our competing school districts, as you can see, is number one. And so that is definitely a selling point that we talk about when we go to recruitment fairs, when we market Parkway, and some of the great things that are happening. One of the other things that we look at are the position fill rates. For Goal Two, a lot of, all of this data is really collected in September because I want to know what we look like when the school year starts. And so this is what our fill rates looked like at the beginning of the school year. And I can tell you, we have dropped off in some of the areas. We still need to recruit hard with our custodial staff, transportation, and food service. Next, measurable objective two is our staff diversity. And in the full report, I did give some data on all schools and where, how our staff relates to the student population as a district. For our presentation, we're just going to look at all certified staff, administrators, and then our supervisors and managers. So as you can see, we do have a long way to go with closing the diversity gap of our staff. One of the things that we try to do is actively recruit in areas that have students of color in the education programs at universities in-state and out-of-state. This is something that we talk about, and we challenge our schools to hire a diverse staff every year. For Goal Three, we would like for all of our employees to be effective in their work. So we look at the ratings that they are given, in their evaluation at the end of the year. And as you can see, over 98% of our certified staff, our exemplary are effective, and those are for teachers as well as administrators. And then for measurable objective four, we look at employee retention. And we do ask, or we're looking for that number to be above the state and national average. And you can see that our overall, all-employee retention rate is about 88%, which is a strong number. For certified staff, for teachers only, it is 94%. And the state retention rate is about 83%. So we're well above that number. You can see that we do retain about 97% of our probationary teachers. Those are teachers that are in years one through five. And then we have a high retention rate of administrators. We don't lose too many administrators or teachers for lateral moves within the area. If we do, it generally is because of location or proximity to their home. And then our overall, our retention rate for our operations staff is 88% as well. Every year, we do give our staff a climate survey, so that will be coming up in the spring. So this is just a highlight of some of the data that we collected in the spring of 2018. Here are just a few of the questions. I just pulled out four questions to share with you. We do give the survey to certified and non-certified staff. This year, we did pull about six questions to ask all staff in the fall, so we'll be able to do some comparative data analysis when we deploy the spring climate survey. Parkway has participated in the top workplace survey over the last five years, and we are very excited that we have achieved that since 2014. And then one other piece of data that we collect is exit survey data. We want to know why people are leaving Parkway, and we want to know their feelings about Parkway when they leave, whether or not they would recommend us as a place of employment for others. And you can see the responses, that 94% that left felt that their supervisors treated them well. 25% of the respondents felt that it was slightly or not, not easy to balance work and personal life, and that is why some folks do leave the profession. We were rated a nine when asked, "How much did you like your coworkers?", which is great because that tells us that we have a positive workplace. And then we were rated an eight for, "How satisfied were you working in Parkway?" So those are really strong numbers. Last, with measurable objective five, Amy Gurking Coats is the champion of this measurable objective. She does a great job with talent development. These are some of the key performance indicators that we look at for how we are continuing to prepare our staff to serve the students. PLC development is something that we continuously work on. 85.6% of the staff felt that they gained strategies that they will apply in their PLC, which is a strong number. And then last year, Amy introduced a concept of personalized professional development. And over the last two years, we have had over 165 proposals for personalized PD, and that's about 13% of our certified staff. Another way that our teachers continually grow and develop is when they take additional coursework through either a master's or specialist program. Last year, we had 167 teachers accomplish a benchmark so they could receive additional credit on the salary schedule, and that was about 11% of our staff. We also have professional learning opportunities in all of our operations departments, and we are happy that this year is our Fall Operations Conference, which will happen in November. And I think we are on to Goal Three.
All right. So tonight, we then talk about our efficiency with responsibly and effectively deploying our resources. So resources not only being finances, but our facilities, our time, and our personnel as well. So our three measurable objectives that we concentrate on, measurable objective one, I will say, will be more like following the rules. So ensuring that we are doing everything by policy and by state statute, that we are mission-driven, and we're following all the rules so that we can get a clean audit, et cetera. Our measurable objective two is all about our allocation of time and our facilities. So ensuring that, you know, we do have the proper staffing where it is needed to support our students. And number three is ensuring that we're building budgets that are based on a zero-based budgeting, changing those mindsets, making sure that when we're adding expenditures, that they are fiscally sustainable. And then we're also looking at everything that we use and we do to make sure that we are supporting a sustainable environment for the future of our students, too. Our first district-wide goal that we truly look at is our fund balance growth. It takes each and every employee truly to work toward this effort for this all to come to fruition. It's not just the work of myself. It's not just the work of the operational directors, but it's truly each department, each building, each teacher allocating resources and spending resources wisely. The other portion of this is ensuring that our revenues that we receive are received on a timely basis. Some things are out of our control, such as protested taxes, et cetera. You may recall that this past year, when we were closing the financial year, we thought that we were going to be in jeopardy of not growing by that 0.25% growth. But other revenues came in, our spending came under, and we were able to achieve that goal. When we build our budgets, we build them currently based on a 0.25% growth. Another objective that we are, measurable KPI that we look at is our external audit. So each year, we do employ external auditors to come in and review our records. So they pull invoices, payroll records, human resources documents, et cetera, to ensure that we're following policy, that we've hired people, and we're paying them at the correct rate. We're approving invoices based on our policies and paying our vendors based on that as well. And then that our financial statements are stated in correct position and agree with the Missouri Accounting Manual. Then they also have to agree with the state statutes as far as our attendance, reporting, et cetera, our counts for our transportation, and then also all the federal funding guidelines that we have to follow. So they check many things when they're here for the audit. So as you can see, we have goal met on all of those for several years. Our next KPI is our AAA bond rating. This is very important for us to maintain this rating because it allows us to go out and sell our bonds, like the bond issue resolution you approved this evening for 55 million. We're able to put that onto the market and actually have a lower interest rate than some of our neighboring school districts because we do actually have this AAA credit rating. It's important for us to have healthy fund balances, and then we also have our voluntary rollback on our residential rate that helps us to achieve that as well. Moving into our Goal Two objectives, our measurable objective two objectives, we're looking at the staffing process and procedure that not only Amy and Phil go through, but it's courageous conversations with the principals as well. Looking at student enrollment, looking at FTE, making sure that we have the correct employees in line for staffing. As you know, salaries and benefits make up around 85% of our budget. So it's very important that our staffing is allocated properly in order to make that whole budget work. We have different staffing buckets. So certified staff, then we have our staff based on title funds, so it's paid 100% by Title I or Title III. And then we also have grant-funded budgets as well. And then we have the operations budgets, the transportation technology, facilities, food service, secretaries, nurses, et cetera. And the philosophy of the funding of the new positions, look and make sure that we definitely need that position before we place that FTE on the agenda for your approval. Analysis of the openings, each time there's an opening, we look at that very hard to see, do we still need that position? So just recently, in the facilities department, we combined the crew lead for the supervisor of the special crew with the warehouse supervisor. So we were able to eliminate a position with kind of like same responsibilities. And we take advantage of those opportunities. So when an opening is present, that's when we're looking and doing a deep dive into those positions. And that's so that we can maintain our fiscal responsibility. Some of the staffing reductions that happened in the past year, so as Gina mentioned early in her report, that they were able to add some behavioral support staff, et cetera. Some of that was done because there were some deep dives into our math facilitator positions, our ADC teachers. We eliminated two of those and created an administration position. And several other, like the staff secretary, some of those positions then were transitioned into some of our support, behavioral support that'll happen with our middle school next year as well. And so here were then the conversion or those adds of the staffing. When we look at our elementary staffing, we really concentrate on the class size. So as you know, that we have district target numbers, and then we have district maximum numbers. So as you can see from this slide, it shows district-wide, our average class sizes by each of the grade levels. On this slide, it depicts then our average class sizes for each of our secondary levels as well. Moving into measurable objective three, more about sustainability. So looking at our energy use. As you know, in 2015, we signed up as a district for the Better Building Challenge. The Better Building Challenge ensured that we would do what it would take to have a 2% reduction in energy use each year. So over a 10-year period, essentially, we'd have a 20% reduction. Couple of things combined with that. So not only our facilities improvements that we've been able to employ with the completion of some of our capital projects and our future capital projects, but also changing habits of our employees as well. Turning off our lights when we leave a classroom, putting in oxygen sensors into some rooms so that lights go off when a space is not occupied. And then enhancing some of our building automation systems as well. One of the buildings that you'll see with a great reduction is North High. So most of that is with that whole Phase One completion of our North High renovations. You can see that our energy certainly reduced with those changes. Then we also look at the energy cost per square foot. As you can see, central office or admin building is one of our higher users, and you may ask why. Well, we actually have the data center, and that has constant electricity, of course, feeding that, and it is heavily used. One of the other things, of course, we look at is our completion of our bond-issue projects. So not only the completion, but looking at the completion time, making sure they were finished on time and on budget. Sometimes we don't make those objectives. So this past year, we had two of our science labs that were not completed on time. There was some finish work that still remained, but school did open. And then we also had our North High building that was about 9% over budget. When we look at the Better Building Challenge and we look at our sustainable expenditures, we look at our wellness program as well because, as Amy mentioned, one of our largest expenses for the district is our benefit program. So we not only offer benefits, 100% paid for employees on two of our plans, but we also offer 50% coverage on our families on the plan as well. So with that, we want to attract and retain a well staff that not only helps with the classroom environment, but certainly with our medical expenditures as well. This past year, we hired on Leah Gonzalez. She used to be a United Healthcare employee. Now she's a Parkway employee. So she has, just in that year, expanded some of our wellness programming, not only to include things with our, tied to our medical plan, but also tied to our prescription drug plan and our wellness initiatives as well. Our, sorry, mental wellness initiatives as well. And then here are some of our comparisons of our engagements by locations, and then the number of events that we have offered as well. So included in your packet, the full packet, is an explanation of some of the measurable objectives and achievements of each of the operations departments as well. But as I said, it takes all of us in order to achieve those fund balance growth targets and, you know, the clean audit, et cetera. It's not just the work of one or two of us. So thank you very much.
So as we think about the work that we continue to do, I think this quote sums it up. "The words of a mission statement are not worth the paper they are written on unless people begin to do differently." And being a Parkway employee, I am proud to say that since we began the work around Project Parkway 2-point, Project Parkway 1.0 and now into 2.0, we continue to do things differently based on what's in the best interest of kids. When you know better, you do better. And I believe we continue to know better because we're learning and researching all of the time, and we do better, which is good for kids. Any questions for any of us, team?
Well, not exactly a question. Obviously covered a lot of material there, and I just want to, on behalf of the board, just tell you how impressed I am with the presentation and with what you all are doing. So, well done and great job. So, well done, and great job.
Are you ready for the final exam?
I'll echo your same thoughts. And I was, I went to the very first Project Parkway meeting, however many years ago, which is what got me here today, because of my involvement with that and my interest in doing that. And Kevin Beckner was one of our small group people that we became acquainted through that way. And so one of the things I just recently heard was that, you know, one of the things that hasn't hardly ever changed in the last 50 to 60 years is how education is, is conducted. And I'm very proud of Parkway that we're trying to change how we're educating students. We, we just can't keep in a vacuum, and we need to keep that energy going the way that we have been for so long. And also, working in a higher education institution, I see they're trying to change, too, how they're educating students, because it just, it needs to change. And I think everybody recognizes that. So I'm very proud that we're, we're continuing to be on that trajectory. I am also happy to see that you're going to try to get trauma-informed care into the high schools. Thank you. I've always had concerns about that not being there, especially when we see so many mobile students coming into our school, our high schools, from other schools, or from private schools, or, you know, just because people are more mobile, and how do we help them? And so thank you for, for doing that. One of the other, the other things that I liked, the idea about that Patty brought up, is I like that we continue to do annual external audits. Thank you. I think that is some of the criticisms from other school districts, is that they're, people don't understand where the finances are, they're, and, and we can back up what we're doing here by the comfort knowing that we've got those external audits annually, and continuing to get our AAA credit rating is just incredibly important. One of the things that Kevin triggered a thought about that I recently heard, you talked about engaging students and of St. Louis Football League coming in to, to help engaging with students. Rockwood recently was in the media about having their, I think they call it their IDC, which is similar to our ADC, and they had first responders coming in to play basketball with these kids. And so I just throw that out there as an idea. And we hear a lot about our, our mainstream school systems, but we don't talk about a lot about our ADC kids, so our alternative discipline center students. I know they get out earlier in the school day, too, and that can create some issues sometimes with parents not being able to get them picked up at one or two in the afternoon, whatever it is. Excuse me. So the idea that there might be an extracurricular activity after school that would engage them with community members, like first responders, or police officers, or something like that, my football players might be kind of a fun thing. Thank you.
I'll just echo some of the sentiments as well. It's obvious the amount of work that goes into not only this, but everything behind this, everything that, that you all put into each different part of this, and, and we really do appreciate it. We really appreciate the, the thought that you put into it and the work that goes into it. So thank you very much.
And I want to echo a lot of that, too, but just the district commitment to Project Parkway from its inception and developing the goals. I know there's been some changes since. We had six goals, now we have three goals. We've had different leaders, but the fact that it's been sustained over all these years, when you see the results of this report in terms of what has been accomplished, not only by the leaders, but collaboratively with the entire school district in one respect or another, it's absolutely fantastic. It's probably the best strategic planning process and, and high achievement level of a district that anyone could ever do. You know, it's, it's just amazing. But congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I, I, working with these people, like I do, I just, your, your really, your comments are very important, because they do their work so well. And I, you know, they really get down in the weeds, and, and I'm not even always aware of the, the details that they're working on, and so I really appreciate their, their due diligence. And there's a little bit of saying that we, I'll just share, you know, you saw when Chelsea started, that, you know, people are working together, but Gina and Kevin are, are connected at the hip, and so are Amy and Patty, and then they're, and now we have all kinds of people that are working together, supporting them. But I, I think that's very, very important, because this work is not done in isolation. And it's really important that, so often, in my experience, you, you get into a lot of departmentalization, you don't share data, you don't, and that sometimes is particularly true between things like human resources and the business office, or you got student services and curriculum areas. So I think we made some really progress to say, and that's, I think, the, the wisdom of putting all three previous goals, one, two, and three, under one goal, I think was really wise. And it's kind of forced, I think, some wonderful collaboration, and so we get away from some of that departmentalization and that's real, the sharing, to get to some common goals, so. So good work, team. I'm really proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you once again. Just a couple of more items. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for a special meeting on Wednesday, February 27th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at Central Middle, for the purpose of conducting the PNEA District Communications Lab. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. The next anticipated closed session will be held Wednesday, February 27th, at 5:30 PM at Parkway Central Middle. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. At the end of this meeting, the Board will reconvene into closed session following this regular meeting. So may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Thank you all.